Specific features formed by carbonation of limestone rocks. Weak acid in rainwater can undermine rock, creating rock cavities below the surface of the earth. Depending on how the line of weakness is aligned, different types of features may be produced. Depressions or dough lines which are basin-like can result from collapse of a rock cavity that developed along a horizontal line of weakness. Sinkholes, also called swallowholes, can develop from the collapse of rock overlying cavities formed along vertical lines of weakness.
There are increasing threats to Jamaica's biological resources, like our plants or animals, due to events like habitat degradation or pollution. And globally, cycles like animal poaching to fuel a thriving fashion industry continues to hover over the idea of sustainable life in the wild. While Jamaica and the rest of the world's ecological challenges of today need innovative solutions, understanding our wildlife, what to protect, the need to protect it, and those mobilized to protect it is one of the biggest starts.
The overall goal for wildlife conservation is really to try and preserve a particular species in its natural environment. So the species that are protected, how do we determine those? Well, Jamaica again, as an island, has a lot of unique species. So that's one of the first things we look at. What are the things that are unique to Jamaica? What are the things that are endemic? So we're looking at endemic species, not just animals but also plants, and we are trying to see how we can ensure that we don't lose those species. There are also species whose numbers are very small. They're not necessarily endemic. Some of them are more widespread, but there are species in Jamaica are very small and they may have a higher threat of exploitation, for example. Persons are going to try and harvest them. And so we try to put some form of control onto the amount of harvest that is done. So in order to do that, we have to bring those species under the Wildlife Protection Act so we can better regulate these activities.
So how do we necessarily choose which animals fall under the country's Wildlife Protection Act?
Now, how do we choose these? Well, we look at what is native, what is endemic, and then we actually do surveys. We look at what the population numbers are like. We are also signatory to several international treaties that actually tell us that certain species that we have on our island are actually endangered, critically endangered on a global scale. And so we have to play our part here in Jamaica to ensure that those species are not lost.
And then there is the issue of domesticated animals, those that are dependent on humans, because over time they have become genetically adopted to live alongside us. But more and more persons are stepping into the wild for new breeds to domesticate. But disturbing that pattern can have implications.
Domesticated animals are real animals that are very dependent on man and very used to habitualize to man. And so we talk about cats and dogs, some pigeons, for example, you know, your rock pigeons, your everyday domestic pigeons. Those are domestic animals. Now, some of our wildlife persons would like to keep as pets. They are not domesticated animals. They are actually wild animals, or parrots, for example. You know, we have two endemic species of parrot, the yellow-billed parrot and the black-billed parrot, and persons would tend to want to keep those as pet. And they are actually protected because their population is low. First off, they're endemic, their population is very low, and their population is also declining. And so we're trying to protect those species.
From around August to somewhere in September, our bird shooting season is a welcome activity. But even these licensed activities, the National Environment and Planning Agents in NEPA is regulating how we protect our endemic species in the wild.
We have hunting season, that is something that is actually regulated. NEPA also declares what are known as game reserves. And game reserves are areas where we do not want any hunting activity to occur, because annually we have annual game bird hunting season. And so we have game reserves to protect populations, especially breeding populations of these birds, so that they are not over-exploited. So game reserves are areas where no one is allowed to hunt. And we actually created a law in such a way that all forest reserves that are managed by Forest Department are actually in effect game reserves as well. So in that sense, NEPA does have a role in forest reserves, in ensuring that no hunting occurs within forest reserves.
So next time you roam a rugged landscape, or pass by the carpet of plants lining the roadways, the thick tangles of bushes, or observe the colony of birds or seemingly baleful mangoes, let's observe without disturbing those patterns of life. Jamaica is on the move with smarter and cleaner transportation. The government is announcing the JUTC fleet with 100 new CNG buses with tents specially outfitted for the disabled. Running on compressed natural gas, these buses reduce emissions while offering advanced safety features and wifi. Jamaica is driving in comfort towards a sustainable future.
Motors, as Minister of Justice, I appeal to you: obey the road code, pay your ticket on time, and only go to court if the ticket is being contested. Close to 80% of matters coming to the parish courts are for traffic breaches. Let's work together to make our roads safe and ease the burden on our courts.
It was rough. Every time the rainfall, the whole place wet up. I have to put the kids' book in a bag until the place dry out. Ah boy, I couldn't afford a new roof. Then one day, they were telling me about a grant, I can get through the government. So I sent a letter to the ministry, telling them walk on. The officers came, they do their inspection, where I was able to go to the hardware store, get the supply, so my roof could have been fixed. I don't think I ever seen my kids' smile so much yet. That mean everything to me. I tell everybody about the grant. The Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation make my life better. They make a big difference for me and my family.
Most major illnesses that affect Jamaicans are caused by unhealthy lifestyles. Over 50% of Jamaicans are overweight. One in three Jamaicans has high blood pressure. One in eight Jamaicans has diabetes. 17% of Jamaicans have high cholesterol. A healthy lifestyle can reduce the risk of most of these diseases. Things like regular exercise and adequate rest can play an important role in maintaining good health. The other major consideration is eating healthy. The question is, how do you walk into a restaurant or fast food outlet and identify the healthier menu items? Better For You is an initiative to help Jamaicans to eat healthier. Restaurants and fast food outlets can voluntarily participate by identifying the items on their menu that meet the food-based dietary guidelines for Jamaica. These menu items would be easily identified with the Better For You logo, so customers can quickly identify healthier meal options by looking at the menu or menu board. Once they see the Better For You logo, they can confidently order that menu item, knowing that it's a healthier choice. Better For You will help Jamaicans to make better choices and prompt restaurants to add better options to their menu. Better For You is better for everyone. Good health begins with better choices.
What is the role of a backbencher in government? I'm glad you asked. They're members of parliament who are not appointed to cabinet, so they sit in the back of the legislature and they apply pressure. They examine what government legislates, participate in parliament debates, raise issues and advocate, and question chamber when things are looked straight. Backbenchers represent the constituents in parliament. Backbenchers oversee the interests of citizens, you and me. But how can they be agents of government accountability after them not holding a portfolio? And them and a minister? No. So then how can they facilitate government transparency? And the next thing, them and a front bencher? So how them affect me? You see, a lot of work is in committees, so these portfolio-free MPs with less dire responsibilities are more accessible to you and me. So they help with policy, but it helps if we engage them, you see? So they are not just in the back benches, but on the ground, in the trenches, though in the back of parliament, we're at the front of their cause. So pause. Find a backbencher at jampja.org.
Jamaica is on the move with smarter and cleaner transportation. The government is announcing the JUTC fleet with 100 new CNG buses with tents specially outfitted for the disabled. Running on compressed natural gas, these buses reduce emissions while offering advanced safety features and wifi. Jamaica is driving in comfort towards a sustainable future.
Motors, as Minister of Justice, I appeal to you: obey the road code, pay your ticket on time, and only go to court if the ticket is being contested. Close to 80% of matters coming to the parish courts are for traffic breaches. Let's work together to make our roads safe and ease the burden on our courts.
It was rough. Every time the rainfall, the whole place wet up. I have to put the kids' book in a bag until the place dry out. Ah boy, I couldn't afford a new roof. Then one day, they were telling me about a grant, I can get through the government. So I sent a letter to the ministry, telling them walk on. The officers came, they do their inspection, where I was able to go to the hardware store, get the supply, so my roof could have been fixed. I don't think I ever seen my kids' smile so much yet. That mean everything to me. I tell everybody about the grant. The Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation make my life better. They make a big difference for me and my family.
Most major illnesses that affect Jamaicans are caused by unhealthy lifestyles. Over 50% of Jamaicans are overweight. One in three Jamaicans has high blood pressure. One in eight Jamaicans has diabetes. 17% of Jamaicans have high cholesterol. A healthy lifestyle can reduce the risk of most of these diseases. Things like regular exercise and adequate rest can play an important role in maintaining good health. The other major consideration is eating healthy. The question is, how do you walk into a restaurant or fast food outlet and identify the healthier menu items? Better For You is an initiative to help Jamaicans to eat healthier. Restaurants and fast food outlets can voluntarily participate by identifying the items on their menu that meet the food-based dietary guidelines for Jamaica. These menu items would be easily identified with the Better For You logo, so customers can quickly identify healthier meal options by looking at the menu or menu board. Once they see the Better For You logo, they can confidently order that menu item, knowing that it's a healthier choice. Better For You will help Jamaicans to make better choices and prompt restaurants to add better options to their menu. Better For You is better for everyone. Good health begins with better choices.
So who keeps our taxpayer money in check? Well, the PAC and PAAC help watch over the country's budget. And one might sound like it just have an extra A, but they're way different. Here's how. The PAAC and PAC are two committees that watch the money. The Public Accounts Committee reviews government projects after them close. They do a post-audit check to see what problems arose with the costs and call officials to explain decisions that cause budget mismanagement. And then they recommend corrective action, so the problem will happen from when, not happen again. But what about the money we are spending right now, the PAAC? That's how. Public Administration and Appropriations Committee pretty much means all your money we protect, as it happen, we check. While projects go on, things are fair accurate. As governments spend the nation's budget, PAAC reviews it. They examine proposals and summon officials to find problems before them don't use it. So the PAC and PAAC are two parliamentary committees that watch over the country's wallet, to protect the budget and keep it in check. And you can get involved, just visit jampja.org. The overall central government spending goes towards debt servicing, recurrent programs, wages and salaries, capital expenditure, and providing loans to public bodies. Recurrent programs are a number of projects that are embarked upon annually by the government. These are usually social intervention programs. Some of Jamaica's recurrent programs include the maintenance of roads and other physical infrastructure, production incentives to farmers, and the continued rehabilitation of farm roads, streetlights for all 14 municipal corporations, starting to execute the national census, the program of advancement through health and education path, central government pension benefits, natural disaster risk management, among several others. The national budget is everybody's business because it impacts every Jamaican. Visit mof.gov.jm for more information.
I'm not allowed to speak for myself. They make all the decisions.
I'm not allowed to go anywhere by myself. They're afraid I'll escape.
See my hand and face bruise up, them beat me, call me, say me tired.
I'm only 13, but they said if I work harder, they will allow me to go home.
Me not have no birth paper, no ID. Them take all of my documents, them.
Victims of human trafficking are all around us and they need our help. Forced labor is one of the many forms of human trafficking. If you see something, say something. Report suspected cases of human trafficking. Call the nearest police station, 119, or 888-PROTECT.
Me, I go show them my way of justice.
I'm abused.
I need legal advice. I don't deserve this.
The truth of the matter is, justice there for all of we. The Ministry of Justice has trained more than 5,600 persons in restorative justice practices. More than 200,000 victims have been supported by the victim services. Legal aid has reached thousands islandwide. Make we talk it out, not fight it out. Call 888-JUSTICE today.
Do you wish there were a way your community could get funding to improve a school, health center, sports program, and more? There is. It's the constituency development fund. Here are a few things you probably didn't know about the CDF and how you can make it work better for you. The CDF policy promotes citizen participation in community development and protection of taxpayers' funds. It outlines that MPs are to meet with citizens at least once every two years to agree on the projects needed. You know, it used to be once a year? We should really go back to that. Projects developed without community consultation are not to be approved by the bipartisan CDF Parliamentary Committee. There are 26 government agencies that implement projects, usually for a small fee. Funds are provided directly from the office of the Prime Minister to the implementing agency, not through the Member of Parliament. The CDF unit monitors project costs and implementation, so if you have questions about how the CDF are run in your community, contact them to ensure no one project or community gets all the funds. There are six project categories with spending limits for each. There must be no less than five and no more than 20 projects each year. To learn more, visit jampja.org to view your MP's CDF info. And tell them how this fund has impacted you. If you don't see your MP's CDF reports, then put them under little pressure, man. Call, tweet, email, ask them when they'll submit it and when is the next CDF meeting. Change is possible. It's already happening. What we need is you. A message from the Jamaica Accountability Meter Portal, funded by the European Union and the Inter-American Development Bank, in partnership with the private sector organization of Jamaica.
Do your part to prevent mosquito breeding. Mosquitoes will breed in any container that holds water.
Tightly cover water storage containers such as drums, barrels, buckets, and tanks. If this cannot be done, pour cooking oil on the water surface. Punch holes in all tins, plastics, and beverage boxes to prevent the collection of water before disposal. Cover all tires or fill with dirt to prevent water collection. Scrub all vases once per week to remove mosquito eggs. Use mosquito repellents to protect yourself from mosquito bites. Dispose of garbage properly by placing in plastic bags and securing properly to prevent water collection.
A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Motors, as Minister of Justice, I appeal to you: obey the road code, pay your ticket on time, and only go to court if the ticket is being contested. Close to 80% of matters coming to the parish courts are for traffic breaches. Let's work together to make our roads safe and ease the burden on our courts.
Dear Stephen, I'm so happy about your promotion. All these years of hard work have finally paid off, and now you're getting the recognition you deserve. I wish you the best of luck on your first day as manager. Remember to send me a picture of your fancy office. I can't wait to hear about your day at dinner. Always yours, Tracy.
In every crash, there are three collisions: the vehicle collision, the human collision, the internal collision. Collisions are preventable. Avoid them all. A message from the Road Safety Unit in the Ministry of Transport and Mining.
The government expects to collect revenue, raise loans, and utilize cash resources to finance the central government expenditure budget. The money to fund the budget comes from taxation, for example, income tax, education tax, stamp duties, general consumption tax, among others. Non-tax, for example, profits in government companies and miscellaneous receipts by the accountant general. Other sources of funding include Capital Development Fund transfer, capital, grants, and the Consolidated Fund. In essence, most of the country's funding comes from revenue and grants, loans, and from prior year cash balances in the Consolidated Fund. The national budget is everybody's business because it impacts every Jamaican. Visit mof.gov.jm for more information.
Are you an entrepreneur producing an excellent Jamaican product or service? Did you know you can earn hard currency and more significant returns by exporting? Contact the Ministry of Industry Investment and Commerce to help propel your business along the export lane.
Everything you can produce, the Jamaicans overseas want it. We're not going to get rich by just bringing down the debt. We're going to get rich by exporting a lot more. So grow exports, create job opportunities, drive economic growth through exports to make Jamaica a richer and much more prosperous country.
Most Jamaicans will tell you corruption in politics is deep-rooted, and they're just set and nothing concerned about that. But actually, there is, and another 152 countries are doing it. It's called asset declaration, and it works best where citizens themselves understand it and help to ensure the law is enforced. Corruption happens when public officials abuse their power to benefit themselves, family, or associates. Jamaica's Integrity Commission Act was designed to prevent corruption, and here are five things you should know. One, under this law, every year MPs and senators must report what they earn, own, and owe. And if they don't, they'll be sanctioned. Two, their report must include the same kind of information for their wife or husband and children. Three, if they get a gift worth more than $100,000 from anyone who's not family, they must declare it. Four, a summary of the declarations of our Prime Minister and opposition leader must be published where the public can read it. Five, parliamentarians can now be prosecuted by the Integrity Commission. They can be fined up to $2 million or serve up to two years in prison if they don't file their declaration or if they give false information. And $500,000 for not filing on time or ignoring requests for information. Unfortunately, our parliamentarians made changes that prevent the public from knowing when they've broken the law or when they're being investigated. We really need to change that. Visit jampja.org to find out more about the act and to track if your MP is obeying this law. If they're not, JAMP's MP tracker will help you. If they're not, JAMP's MP tracker will help you write, tweet or call the MP. Ask them, you submit your declaration yet? The Integrity Commission clear you? Let's help the parliament stay honest.
A message from the Jamaica Accountability Meter Portal, funded by the European Union and the Inter-American Development Bank in partnership with the private sector organisation of Jamaica.
Dengue is ordinarily a mild disease. Persons may get a fever, headache, joint and muscle pains. The illness is often resolved through rest and adequate hydration along with paracetamol to treat the accompanying fever. However, on occasions, the illness can progress to severe dengue, which can result in organ failure, bleeding and severe fluid depletion that can lead to shock and even death. Therefore, it is important for persons who are experiencing fever, vomiting, severe abdominal pain, bleeding under the skin, feeling very weak or getting confused to seek immediate attention. Let us work together to protect ourselves against dengue.
Persons can now make payment of their police record through Tax Administration Jamaica, THJ's mobile app found on the Google Play Store.
It's an ABC 123. Very easy for you to follow the steps in making your payments. Once that is done, the application will actually send you a notification to say that you have successfully done your transaction. And then following that, you will actually get what we call, you'll actually get two notices. You'll actually get one from your bank, from the application to say that your bank transaction has been completed. And then the second one that you will get is from Tax Administration's application now, which will say that you have been successful and you actually get what we call a statement of payment with a reference number on it. And that's the reference number that you use here.
Signing up is free and is currently available on Android phones and tablets.
A new story is being written for all Jamaicans. The Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation is on a mission to transform lives. From increasing access to potable water, providing secure homes for the most vulnerable and helping you own a piece of the rock. We're revitalising communities and preserving our environment. We're making an impact. See the difference, feel the difference. Building a better Jamaica for you and me. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness. Jamaica moves, the Heart Foundation of Jamaica, the National Health Fund and Jap.
Me, I go show them my way of justice.
I'm abused.
I need legal advice. I don't deserve this.
The truth of the matter is, justice there for all of we. The Ministry of Justice has trained more than 5,600 persons in restorative justice practices. More than 200,000 victims have been supported by the Victim Services. Legal aid has reached thousands islandwide. Make we talk it out, not fight it out. Call 888 JUSTICE today.
Remember that big project the government announced they must go into from when? You ever catch yourself a wander won't do it? Stop wander like a outsider and start move like the country belong to you. You have a right to publicly owned information and the Access to Information Act gives you that power. I know you have enough questions about how government are run or not run. So let me show you how it works. Say mosquito spraying going on in your community. Your children asthmatic and you want to know what chemicals are in it. Or what about that audit general report on a public official getting twice his salary with no proper approval? Is your taxes and you want to know if they paid it back? First, do some basic searching to see what is already on government websites. If you don't see what you're looking for, make a formal ATI request by completing the application form on the ATI site or sending a letter or email. And remember, you don't have to say why you need it. It is your right to know. Make sure you send your request to the right agency. And once they confirm receipt, they get 30 calendar days to provide the information, a maximum of 60 if extra time is needed. Yes, I know you want access to everything, but sensitive documents are protected from the public for up to 20 years. For example, documents that would expose a citizen's personal privacy or those dealing with cabinet discussions, the Governor General's office or information on the investigative activities of the security forces. Any public officer who tries to destroy or hide any official document can be sanctioned. And if you're having difficulties, the ATI unit will help. So what if the chemicals in the mosquito spray are toxic? What if the agency did not even try to get back the money they paid out? Call or email your MP. Share the concern because as your elected representative, they can represent your questions to the government ministers in the house. Remember, it is the job of parliamentarians to monitor and hold the government to account on your behalf. Isn't that every country gives citizens kind of power now? And at 20 years, we have this law and we barely use it. So access information and mind your business, Jamaica. Visit jampja.org today to see what information we access to make it easier for you to hold the government to account. Let's do our job to make Jamaica land we love, Jamaica land we own and Jamaica land we run well.
A message from the Jamaica Accountability Meter Portal, funded by the European Union in partnership with the private sector organisation of Jamaica.
Jamaica is your homeland. You are not homeless or stateless. What we are trying to build here is a place where every Jamaican can feel proud and comfortable to come back home. That's what we want to build here, your homeland. And if you're finding it difficult where you are, come back here. Aki and salt fish was always good. On the tree, you can get it. Don't stay there and suffer. Come back home. But as I said before, don't come back here to destroy your homeland and what we have been working very hard to create so that you wouldn't have had to leave in the first place. And as I said, we have been making strides in that regard. So expect to be dealt with with a firm hand if your intent is criminal. Come back and let us build your homeland so that you can stand up with pride with the citizens of the world about your country. That you don't have to be economic refugees. That's what it is about. Disabuse yourself of this notion that you can only make it through crime and therefore you're going to join a gang and become a part of the problem. I appeal to all of you who have been exposed overseas and see what prosperity is like. Come back home and let us work together to build the prosperous nation that Jamaica is destined to be.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Prime Minister and Chair of the Conference. My microphone, please. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the press conference. We apologise for the delayed start. My name is Laverne Reed from the CARICOM Secretariat in Guyana. And I'm very pleased to present to you today the Chair of the Conference of CARICOM Heads of Government, Dr. The Most Honourable Andrew Holness. This afternoon, he is joined at this press conference, the closing press conference for the 49th meeting of the conference by colleague heads of government and Dr. Carla Barnett, Secretary General of CARICOM. I now invite the Chair of Conference to address you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to welcome you to this afternoon's press conference as we bring to an end the 49th regular CARICOM meeting. I'm happy to be joined by my colleague head, Prime Minister of St Kitts and Nevis, the incoming Chair, Honourable Dr. Terence Drew and Mr. Laurent Saint-Sir of Haiti, the Haiti's Transitional Presidential Council. And of course, Dr. Carla Barnett, our Secretary General. The theme of the CARICOM conference was people, partnership and prosperity promoting a secure and sustainable future. Over the past two days, we addressed several critical issues of urgent regional priority and reaffirmed our commitment to deliver tangible results for the people of the community. Before I provide an update on the discussions, allow me to take a moment to honour the memory of Ricky Singh, the esteemed Guyana-born journalist whose fearless, incisive reporting shaped Caribbean discourse for over six decades. Mr. Singh passed away recently in Barbados, leaving behind a legacy of courage, integrity and unwavering commitment to regional unity and press freedom. We extend our deepest condolences to his family, friends and colleagues in Caribbean journalism. On the CARICOM single market and economy, we agreed that the pace and scope of implementation was just too slow. And we agree that we will do everything in our power to speed up implementation. And I'm pleased to share that we are now moving from applying administratively the Protocol on Enhanced Cooperation, which all member states have signed, with now four countries, Barbados, Belize, St Vincent and the Grenadines and Dominica, reiterating their willingness to implement full free movement under the protocol starting October 1, 2025. I want to make clear that Jamaica remains committed to implementing full free movement in accordance with the treaty amendments. And we are also examining ways to speed up our own implementation. The fact is that due to our legislative framework and other considerations, we have had to move with greater consideration. However, it is our intention to speed up the implementation of full free movement. Jamaica is indeed committed to this. Now, within the framework of existing, the existing skills regime, heads agreed to add aviation personnel to the approved list of skilled categories. And it is worth noting that Jamaica contributed three new occupations to the list, namely photogrammetry, field maintenance personnel and aircraft maintenance personnel. The External Trade Negotiations Committee, which I lead, continues to monitor the developments in the trade space as we seek to develop a collective strategic response to issues which affect us. We also discussed deepening and diversifying CARICOM's bilateral trade relations with several traditional and non-traditional partners. Now, as I shared during my opening remarks on Sunday, a secure CARICOM is a viable CARICOM. And as such, security remains high on the agenda for the duration of my chairmanship and beyond. We adopted the Montego Bay Declaration on Transnational Organized Crime and Gangs, underscoring our united stance against criminal networks. We welcomed, as one of our special guests, His Excellency Valdesi Urquiza, Secretary General of Interpol and committed to strengthening cooperation and expanding access to its global resources. We also welcomed the Secretary General of the OAS, His Excellency Albert Ramdin, and explored avenues for renewed cooperation with the OAS. On Haiti, we continue to be gravely concerned about the developments in that country. CARICOM has been very vocal in its call for international support and has been working with Haiti to ensure that its needs and concerns are being addressed. We had a very detailed discussion with Mr. Saint-Sir of the Haitian Transitional Presidential Council, who apprised us of the work of that council towards strengthening security, holding a referendum on the reform of the constitution and holding elections in November. Later on, I will invite Mr. Saint-Sir to share a few of his own perspectives on the situation. In November 2025, all roads will lead to Belém, Brazil, for the UN Climate Change Conference, that is COP30. As small states, we continue to have a vested interest in building climate resilience. We approved our regional climate priorities and revised framework for building climate resilience 2025-2030, ensuring that the Caribbean speaks with one voice on climate financing and adaptation. On food and nutrition security, this continues to be a key element of our agenda as we seek to reduce the region's food import bill through the transformation of our agricultural sector. As we agreed in February to extend the Vision 25 by 2025 initiative until 2030, we use this meeting to endorse the Food Security Formulation and Design Plan and related mechanisms. I wish to thank President Ali of the Corporative Republic of Guyana, who has been expertly leading the region's effort under this portfolio. As you may have heard, a recent report highlighted Guyana as probably the only country in the world which has the capacity to feed itself. Guyana is indeed food-sufficient. Earlier this year, heads of government initiated a discussion on enhancing governance arrangements in CARICOM to improve implementation of decisions and to provide political leadership. The reality is that our operations must be more agile and fit for purpose as we seek to deliver outcomes for our community in more efficient and timely ways. We also received updates on several frameworks and mechanisms for functional cooperation, which are at various stages of implementation or consideration. And these include the draft CARICOM Industrial Policy and Strategy, which is being conceptualised to promote government interventions and policies to empower specific industries, sectors and firms to achieve and sustain regional competitiveness. Demographic trends and the proposed establishment of a Regional Population Commission. of a Regional Population Commission, through which we can inform the preparation of a CARICOM Population Policy. That's another framework which we discussed. We also discussed a report from our CARICOM Youth Ambassadors regarding the most pressing needs of regional youth. We welcome their vision and their role in regional development and look forward to an improved institutional framework for their involvement. The proposed CARICOM Education Transformation Commission was also discussed and this is devised to drive a unified equity-based education reform agenda across the region. In particular, we discussed how it can be operationalised in a manner that ensures its sustainability and does not compound the requirements of member states. Of course, we also discussed arrangements for the staging of the fifteenth Carifesta in Barbados next month. Prime Minister Motley spoke on these arrangements and she has asked me to extend invitation to everyone who attended the conference and of course, to all Jamaicans to support Barbados in their hosting of Carifesta. Now, while the European Union has recommended to the European Parliament via its delegated Regulation of June 2025 that Jamaica and Barbados be delisted, this has not fully materialised as different groups in the parliament, for reasons unrelated to the domestic situation in Barbados and Jamaica, have issued motions that will block positive action in this regard. We urge a reconsideration of this posture. Now, we also had exchanges on legislation for online safety and protection of young people from online abuse, cyberbullying and exploitation. In recognition of the importance of this issue, we have mandated the Legal Affairs Committee to look at a proposal for a model law for the digital safety of Caribbean people, following the consultations and discussions that were held. On the issue of regional transportation, we also agreed to establish a small committee led by the Prime Ministers of St Vincent and the Grenadines and the Republic of Barbados, as well as the President of the Corporative Republic of Guyana, to review presentations on ferries and report back to heads. We also discussed the issue of reparations and I'm pleased to report that there was broad support for Jamaica moving forward with a petition to King Charles III, in his capacity as Jamaica's Head of State, to seek a formal ruling from the Privy Council on whether the Atlantic enslavement of Africans was lawful under common law and whether local laws supporting it were invalid and whether or not slavery, as practiced in Jamaica up to 1838, constituted a crime against humanity under international law and whether, if so, the United Kingdom bears a legal obligation to provide reparations to Jamaica and its people for the enduring harm caused. Through the use of this legal route to challenge the historical legality of slavery and assert claims for reparations, this petition will mark a watershed moment for CARICOM and the broader global movement for reparatory justice. Ladies and gentlemen, the next six months of Jamaica's chairmanship will be very active with several opportunities for us to amplify on the world stage the issues we have discussed and agreed upon in Montego Bay. Indeed, we look forward to engaging our partners at the second CARICOM Africa Summit to be held in Ethiopia this September and at the eightieth session of the United Nations General Assembly, also being held in September, and at COP30 to be held in Brazil in November and the Summit of the Americas to be held in the Dominican Republic in December. To my colleague heads of government, delegations from the member states and associate members of CARICOM, the CARICOM Secretariat and the community organisations, our special guests and our many international partners and friends, I express my sincere appreciation for your contributions to the success of this meeting. I am inspired by what we have accomplished and confident of what we will continue to achieve together. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now take your questions and respond to your queries.
Thank you, Chair. We will abide by the protocols already established by the Office of the Prime Minister in Jamaica. One question per journalist, please. And when you are recognised, please give us your name, the media entity you represent and the territory from which you come. Prime Minister, we also have journalists online and we will take a few questions there as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. But before we take your questions, and I know there would be many questions, I did say that I would ask my good friend Laurent Saint-Sir of the Transitional Presidential Council in Haiti to give us a few words.
Thank you. At the conclusion of my participation in the forty-ninth Conference of Head of State of CARICOM, I'd wish to express my deep gratitude to the Government of Jamaica for its warm welcome and to the Honourable Andrew Holness for his leadership. I commend his commitment alongside all our CARICOM partners to placing the security crisis in Haiti at the forefront of regional priorities. Haiti today needs the region to speak with one voice in defence of security, peace and sustainable development. I thank the countries that have already contributed personally to the MSS and those offering training in support of our national security force. But we must readable our efforts. Each sister nation can continue to contribute to the restoration of peace and security in Haiti through training, logistical support, financial assistance and technical support. We are also counting on you to intensify advocacy with other regional and global partners for increased support toward more rigorous regional cooperation in controlling the illicit flow of arms and ammunition and combating drug trafficking. I welcome the discussions and the shared consensus that Haiti's security also depends on investments, including foreign direct investment to address the structural causes of insecurity. Haiti remains a land of opportunity. We invite our partners to support economic recovery, especially in key sectors such as infrastructure, the green economy, innovation, education and training, cultural tourism and security, particularly in the Greater North and Greater South. I reaffirm my commitment to working alongside my colleagues at the TPC toward a successful transition. Haiti is ready to fully assume its responsibilities, but we will not succeed alone. Haiti relies on its friends and international partners, especially within CARICOM, for the restoration of security, the organisation of elections and long-term support for national reconstruction. It is together, through a united front of coherent, sustainable and solidaristic actions that we will be able to face this crisis and deliver on the major priorities of Haiti's transition. Helping Haiti rise is to respond to a regional imperative of security, stability and solidarity. This is what it means to build a safe and sustainable future, the theme that has brought us together over these past three days. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurent. We can now take questions.
Thank you, Chair. If you would raise your hand, please. We will recognise you in the order in which I see you and then afterwards, we'll ask you to turn your microphone on. Floor is open? Yes, please go ahead, lady in the black jacket. Yes.
Thank you. Just, Patricia Duncan, The Guardian, UK. And I'm from St Vincent and the Grenadines. And this is directed to the Prime Minister, Holness. Just in terms of the reparations discussions that you had and you mentioned that you had broad support for Jamaica's move to take those questions to King Charles. I wanted to find out what implications this will have for other Caribbean countries, especially those, you know, where King Charles is not their Head of State. How will this affect or support the reparations movement moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. The reparations movement has grown and there are diverse approaches as to how the issue of reparations should be treated. The consensus in CARICOM is that we should explore all routes, but we should be coordinated. Jamaica had long had its own reparations effort and I think at this point, I should acknowledge the efforts of Jamaica Member of Parliament, Mike Henry, who many years ago brought a resolution to the Jamaican Parliament to pursue a particular avenue, which is an appeal to the Head of State, now the King, through the Privy Council to test whether or not slavery was actually legal under British law and slavery as practiced by the British Empire, whether or not that was legal. That resolution was passed in our Parliament and affirmed by our Cabinet and we are now executing it. The CARICOM Reparations Council or Committee also has an approach, which is a much broader approach, which seeks to look at the developmental aspects of the reparations movement and approach. And we had discussions internally as to how both strategies can be reconciled and it was agreed that both strategies reinforce each other. And it was agreed therefore that Jamaica could move forward. Now, exploring it, we don't know what the outcome will be, but whatever the outcome is, advances the cause of reparations. If the answer is yes, it was illegal, then clearly, everybody benefits. If the answer is no, then we understand what the position of the former colonial power is and we know how to strategise around that. So it's a win-win for everyone.
Gentlemen, just beside her, please go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Akash Samaru, Guardian Media in Trinidad and Tobago. Now, with respect to the United States and the imposition of tariffs, now the initial deadline for nations to finalise bilateral trade agreements, which was July 9th, has been extended to August 1st. When President Trump first announced tariffs in April, most CARICOM countries were at 10%. Now, from CARICOM's perspective, was that issue discussed and what's the plan here on the issue as it evolves?
As you would know, CARICOM has an External Trade Negotiation Committee. First of all, that committee has been very active and they have met. Ambassador McCook leads the direct administrative interface. But they have also mobilised various working groups, which include the CARICOM Private Sector Organisation, which we received a very extensive report this morning at the Private Sector Engagement. And we have also solicited support from other entities. Now, our position is that we should seek to defend the historical trade relations that we have had with the United States, particularly under the CBI. We cannot give up on differential and preferential treatment for small island developing states. The truth is that trade also has a development element to it. Now, this is not wishful thinking, but we do recognise that we are existing in a changing environment. But we must negotiate strongly from our position. And that is, there is the development aspect and we should continue to press home that trade should take into consideration the historical development issues of the region. Nevertheless, we have engaged with the US Trade Representative on this matter and they have essentially said that after the 9th, then they will re-engage with us for further negotiations. So we are preparing for very strong negotiations for our position.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Recognising the gentleman on this side, please go ahead.
Good evening. This question is to Dr Holness. And it's, there was supposed to be discussions yesterday on climate change and financing. Is there any update, Prime Minister?
I'm sorry. We are preparing, as usual, for the upcoming COP, which will include discussions on climate financing. I mean, the issues haven't really changed. The issue of access and the dedication of more resources to climate change. We did discuss and the concerns were raised that it is clear that some countries are recrafting, recalibrating, even changing their position on the issue of climate change and the financing that they would have normally allocated. And it is a concern, but we should bear in mind that this region, and in particularly CARICOM and small island developing states, will continue to lobby very hard for climate justice. And we will continue to press the international community to fulfil their obligations as it relates to ensuring that there is adequate resources for adaptation and mitigation efforts.
Thank you, Chairman. Please go ahead.
Anthony Logg, Television, Jamaica. Dr Holness, the International Court of Justice is due to deliver its advisory opinion on the legal consequences of climate change later this month. Can you say what are your expectations and what would be the next steps for the Caribbean if the advisory does not support the climate change, climate justice case?
Well, you know, it's hard to make a pronouncement on what a court is likely to say. But without prejudice to that, I would be surprised if the pronouncement were not that there is an impact on, in particular, lesser developed countries from climate change and in particular, small island developing states and that there should be special provisions in financing made to ensure that there is climate justice in this regard. That would be my expectation, not my pronouncement. That would be my expectation, not my pronouncement, on what the court may say. May I take this opportunity to invite the incoming Chair, Dr Terence Drew, Prime Minister of St Kitts, if you would like to come in on this matter?
Thank you very much, Chairman. With respect to the issue of climate change, the Caribbean has been on the forefront of really advocacy and pushing for justice. We have not relented in our efforts to ensure that we see some level of justice. And just to give you some background as to why we are continuing to fight for this matter as a matter of justice and not a matter of sympathy or any other discussion around it, we suffer significantly as a result of climate change. This is the hurricane season, and right now it is like Russian roulette. We don't know who will be hit, and who will be hit can be hit devastatingly, which would take years of recovery, or the extent of the damage can be such a high percentage of the overall GDP that those countries are set back. We see the effects with respect to the Sargasson affecting the beaches throughout the Caribbean and having an impact on our tourism. We see the insidious impact of climate change with respect to the increased temperature and so forth, and how that is affecting our infrastructure, our daily lives, and even health. Climate and health is a significant matter, and I speak as a medical doctor as well, climate and agriculture and food security. Climate is affecting every single aspect of our life, whether we know it or not, and therefore, we are expecting that, you know, and it's reasonable to expect that the court will stand on the side of justice. So we are hoping for a favourable outcome. If for any reason the outcome that we hope to get is not had, that will not daunt us in any way. We will continue to be on the front line of this advocacy and to seek justice, and act the Caribbean press. You all are here, you live in the Caribbean, you suffer from the scourge of climate change. We want you also to join us to make a strong case for the Caribbean, SIDS and other countries that are disproportionately affected by climate change. To last, to say lastly, we have not created the issue, we are the victims of the issue. However, we are not going to act like victims, we are going to be our own advocates and to join with those who want to see justice with this. So we seek international partners, but we also seek your partnership. I want to see articles and news items dealing with the scourge of climate change in the Caribbean and spreading it to the wider world. So together, I think, we can really make a strong case on which way we intend to reach on the matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Prime Minister Drew.
Lady at the end of the table? Yes, yes.
My question is to the Chairman. I'd like to find out from you if any other Caribbean country has committed to sending military aid to Haiti, and whether or not Jamaica will be sending more of its people to help in that country.
There are some longstanding commitments. I wouldn't necessarily call it military aid. More personnel support for the multinational security force that is there, but there are no new commitments since then. It's Jamaica and Belize, I believe, would be the only two countries that would have presently a deployment on the ground. I'm not sure the Bahamas has any deployment. They made a commitment, but I'm not sure that the Bahamas had a deployment. But they do help with maritime security in the area. Other countries regionally in Latin America have been providing support and have indicated, my understanding, that they are willing to provide support. Guyana and, well, Guyana would have indicated their willingness to provide humanitarian support, and of course, Jamaica would join in that as well. The difficulty with providing humanitarian support is that you need to have some form of security mechanism to ensure that the humanitarian support actually gets to the intended beneficiaries. So presently, the challenge would be a resource challenge, to have enough resources to support a full deployment of security personnel. Currently, the largest deployment in Haiti would be from Kenya, and that essentially leads the multinational security force. But Lauren is here, and he could give you some more details on that.
Yes, I would add, based on my conversation with the Prime Minister of the Bahamas, he will try to send a vessel along with the help of the US in the region close to Haiti. So this is what I wanted to add.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Please go ahead. Yes.
Thanks. Okay. Gabriel Martinez from Tsinghua News Agency. How viable and impactful do you define South-South cooperation for development of CARICOM? What concrete steps is the community taking after this meeting to deepen ties with other regions like Africa, Asia, Latin America? Thank you.
Well, to follow on from the question about what are we going to do about the new America First trade policy, which is being implemented, and the 10% base tariff that we now face? We've long, as a region, we've long been talking about strengthening trade cooperation, South-South with Africa, with Central and South America, and even within CARICOM, because even within CARICOM, the trade is probably less than 15% internal relative to total trade. So the question is, you know, what are you going to do with this new base tariff that's implemented? Well, one of the things we have to do is to diversify our trade, and now it's not just a matter of talk, it is an urgent matter. So we have been engaged with the Afriexim Bank, and that has gone very well. They have established an office in Barbados, and Jamaica just today signed the instruments of partnership. And so we will be looking to utilise the trade facilitation and finance facilitation that comes with this partnership to increase trade, not just in goods, but trades in services as well, and in particular, the creative industries, which we do have a comparative and competitive advantage in. Internally, internally within CARICOM, there are still some non-tariff barriers and other measures that form an obstacle to trade. And we have put together a committee headed by the Foreign Ministers and Ministers of Trade of Jamaica and Barbados to seriously examine how we can reduce, if not totally remove, these non-tariff barriers and to standardise procedures across the board to facilitate greater trade intra-regionally. The region has incredible resources, but there needs to be greater economic coordination through the CSME, but directly through our private sector. Guyana, for example, Guyana, Trinidad, and Suriname have incredible resources in energy. They have discovered oil. Jamaica has a very strong financial architecture, strong financial markets. Other areas are strong in agriculture and services. So there is a strong intra-regional basis for trade. There has to be some public infrastructure to support that as well. For example, the critical one is transportation. We have made some progress in air transportation, and from my remarks earlier, I mentioned that we have now, we're well down the road in developing a plan for a ferry service regionally, which is likely to start in the eastern Caribbean, but that would also have some cargo capabilities, and the plan is to expand that regionally. So I would say that for the first time, the region is really taking very seriously the diversification of its, of the CSME and the common economy, and putting in place the infrastructure to support intra-regional trade and to support South-South trade.
Mr Chairman, I know Jamaica has another event planned. We will take one more question from the room, and then we will wrap up for this afternoon.
My Prime Minister, Dr Andrew Holness, as you know, my name is Russ Asta Black, and I'm from Bob Arts Television, which is local here in Jamaica. I would like to take things in a softer vibes right now, in asking you to endorse the North Coast Highway from Montegabe Airport to Otteras to be renamed the Reggae Highway as a tribute to all our ambassadors of this great music come from this little island, reggae.
How can I say no? Well, obviously, I can't make policy on the fly, but I would say, I would say it's an excellent, it's an excellent idea. And though this is not, what you have raised is not necessarily CARICOM related, but just for context, we are planning the extension of the North-South Highway, and there actually was a proposal, still a live proposal, to name a part of that corridor after a great international musical icon with Jamaican heritage, Harry Belafonte. So the idea is one that does resonate with me, and I will take it back to Cabinet and have a full discussion to see how that could be accommodated. Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate that you, colleague heads, and the Secretary General have made yourselves available to speak today with the media. And the Chair would like to take a final question from the room, from the side.
Not that I would like to, but...
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shauna Fongiu. My question, are we going to see more trading among Caribbean nations?
Yeah, I mean, the... The answer to that is yes, you're going to see more trading, but, look, most of our economies are service-based, so you're going to see more trade, but you should also take note that trade works when there are other parallel activities. So there needs to be a freer and more integrated capital market and a freer labour market, and therefore, the free movement of labour in the region is something that is critical. And as I had announced earlier, we now have four countries that have indicated that they are at the stage where they are prepared to start as of the 1st of October, as of 1st of October, and Jamaica is making the commitment that we will do it, but we still have to work out our internal legal and procedural issues, but what we're committing to is to put that on a fast track. In fact, the Minister of Foreign Affairs will likely be tasked with ensuring that very, very soon, we can join the other four who have said they are ready. Oh, and the Secretary General is reminding me that for trade, you need transportation as well, and we are well on our way in that, both for trade and for the free movement of labour. Prime Minister Drew wanted to come in, and then they take the final question.
Oh, right, I thought that was the final question, but nothing is wrong nonetheless. But with respect to a couple of things, on the matter of Haiti, the other countries, I think, all countries are on board to help out humanitarian from the humanitarian standpoint. As you know, we don't have large armies, and those of us who have a sort of armies, really a difference force with limited resources, and so that might not be where the Caribbean is strongest, but the Caribbean, of course, what it's doing now through CARICOM and, of course, humanitarian-wise, we are always ready to support, and Haiti knows that it has our support. With respect to the trade, I think that it is critically important, especially with the South-South that you spoke about and reconnecting to Africa. Mine myself has been, I have been to Africa twice this year already, to Nigeria, and as you know, the President for Nigeria visited the eastern Caribbean, specifically St Lucia, just a few weeks ago. I had Air Peace landed in St Kitts, which was one of the largest planes ever landed in St Kitts and Nevis that came directly from Abuja to St Kitts and Nevis. And so we are very, very serious when we say we want to increase trade, South-South, and especially between the Caribbean and Africa. And as the Chairman mentioned, we'll be going to Addis Ababa in Ethiopia just now, in September, and through that mechanism, we hope to strengthen ties and to increase South-South trade. The world is shifting, things are shifting, and we must shift. We can't complain. Other countries make decisions in their interests. We must make decisions in our interests and not be totally upset with other countries. So our matter is, how can we do for ourselves so that the Caribbean and CARICOM can continue to thrive? And to say lastly, I mean, the Prime Minister, Andrew Holness, would wrap up, is that saying I will be the Chair, the incoming Chair, and my chairmanship will last from the 1st of January for six months in 2026, and we intend to have our conference there, our Heads of Government, the 25th of February to the 27th of February. And so I want to invite you, of course, to that as well, and to let you know that the present Chair, Prime Minister Holness, can count on my support as the incoming Chair, because his success as Chair of CARICOM is all of our success, and we continue to build a stronger and stronger Caribbean community. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Good evening, Most Honourable Dr Holness. My name is Michael Brown, and I serve as the Deputy Head of Mission of the Black Diplomats Academy based in Canada. You mentioned that the youth ambassadors came up with a CARICOM Education Transformation Commission. Can you please expound on what that infrastructure would look like, and what's the timeline for such a rollout would be, and what partnerships would be most relevant to help with the implementation?
Thank you, thank you for that question. Two separate things. The Education Transformation, the Education Transformation Task Force Commission, it's, I don't believe that was by the youth ambassadors, but they would have given their views relative to education. I'm going to allow the Secretary General to give you some more details on that.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. The CARICOM Educational Transformation Commission is a separate effort, and it is designed to do review and recommendations on how...
to do review and recommendations on how education can be transformed, delivered, received differently for young people and constant learning throughout life to develop the capabilities within our society that we need to treat with the issues that we're dealing with and to overcome some of those that we would have adopted from the education systems, which for the most part were developed during the colonial era. So that is one issue. The other issue of the young people is separately situated. The community and Chairman Holness has made an absolute priority of it. We value the input of young people. We are encouraging it, or CARICOM Ambassador's Program. The Young Ambassador's Program is critical. But we want to develop their involvement in policymaking, in influencing what we do by involving them more systematically in the process, rather than limit their participation only to a single exchange with heads on the occasion of this kind of meeting. So there's a proposal to develop a more ongoing conversation with young people that they have come up with and we're in the process of working out how we implement expanding youth involvement in decision-making in the community.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
In summary, you know, I'm often asked when I return from CARICOM trips abroad, and I'm certain that when I go back to Kingston, somebody's going to ask, so how did this benefit Jamaica? Which I'm sure when Prime Minister Drew returns to St. Kitts, he's going to be asked. So were you in Montego Bay having a Akian softish meal and on the beach? Or were you working in our interest? And sometimes it's very difficult for the public to relate with this exercise of bringing regional heads together because it all looks so officious and so way above everybody's grasp and understanding of the issues, because the issues can oftentimes seem so remote. And so it doesn't seem as if it deals with the bread and butter issues. But take, for example, the bread and butter issue of being able to conduct banking transactions with ease and convenience. For the average person, the overbearing regulations are a great frustration. And they could easily conclude it is just the inefficiency of government, why we have to fill out so many documents and provide so many forms of identification and answer so many questions to transfer $100. Not understanding that there is a global architecture for anti-money laundering and other requirements imposed on states by various global entities. And it affects not just Jamaica, it affects an entire region. This is a problem that is right across the region. And therefore, governments have to come together regionally to interface with these global bodies and lobby on your behalf so that the regulation requirements can be much more efficient and simpler for the average person to be able to interface with the financial system. I would have read something, and I'll read it again to demonstrate the problem. While the European Commission has recommended to the European Parliament via its delegated Regulation of June 2025 that Jamaica and Barbados be delisted, this has not fully materialized as different groups in the Parliament, that is the European Parliament, for reasons unrelated to the domestic situation in Barbados and Jamaica, have issued motions that will block positive action in this regard. We urge a reconsideration of this posture. Nobody understands that. And therefore, the question would be asked of me, you know, why did you come here? Well, hidden in all of this is CARICOM's strident appeal to the European Union to exercise a greater discretion that countries that have complied through great sacrifice, discomfort of a developing country, that greater discernment and consideration be given to our circumstances and that we are not lumped in with everyone else or having to wait for an extended period of time before relief can be given to us. And so that is what we were here doing today. It may not materialize tomorrow that you will have an easier banking system, but over time it will. Take, for example, the issue of security. Crime and violence used to be thought of many, many years ago as only a Jamaica problem. Now it is a regional problem. And all of us, all heads, have to be addressing it. Crime and violence is, I use the term, you know, multifaceted and multidimensional. Prime Minister Drew, by trading a medical doctor, takes very strongly and seriously the public health approach. For me, I was and still am an advocate of the public health approach. But having had to deal with the problem for the last almost 10 years, I have come to the conclusion by virtue of the evidence that I see every day, that a large part of crime and violence is organized. It has intelligence, finance, and some structured administration behind it. I use the word administration advisedly, but there is somebody planning, somebody accounting, somebody keeping records, somebody checking what is happening, somebody making connections. And we have not dealt with it for the sophistication that is behind it. Now, the truth is that if you were to look at every homicide committed, every murder committed in the region, maybe 70% or more could be ascribed to an organized use of violence, which ended up in the ultimate loss of life. If that is the case, we have to restructure our society. We have to restructure our police force to deal with this. We have to retrain them. We have to train their doctrine. We have to give them the right equipment. We have to give them the intelligence capability. We have to look at our legislative framework. We have to look at the judicial prudence that is employed to deal with this, because that's the nature of the problem. We have to also consider it an emergency, because if it is left unattended, then you see the ultimate result of that, which is a state being threatened to be overtaken by gangs, which is Haiti. And that is what we are here discussing, which is why the, one of our special guests was the Secretary General of Interpol. Interpol is the premier global policing organization. They have incredible resources. They have massive databases, which can be of use to us in dealing with this organized criminal enterprise. And therefore, we are exploring ways to intensify. We do have a very strong relationship with Interpol, but we're looking at ways to intensify that. And more than that, we are also sharing with other countries in the region. We've put on a mini-security expo to show other countries in the region what Jamaica is doing and how what we're doing could be replicated in their own space. And so that's beneficial to everyone. And there are multiple other activities here, which will redown to the benefit of the average person, whether it is to increase your ease of travel, your financial access, reduction in the cost of living, increase in job opportunities, increase in healthcare, dealing with issues of climate change. All of these impact the average person. So in closing, these meetings are absolutely important for the local electorate. And I wish to assure that others listening regionally, that your issues in your country were ably addressed by your representatives who attended this meeting. And again, I thank all the heads who attended, all the delegations. It was a successful meeting and even contentious matters, which at the start appeared intractable. At the end, you saw my selfie with everybody smiling. God bless you all and thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening.